Wednesday, May 21st, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Please join us in signing your political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings, meetings LS, and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. I do have one quick announcement. Household Hazardous Waste Day will be on June 7th in Pembroke at the Recycling Center. The information is up on the website and things that you can bring in to be recycled, and there is no charge of your current resident, but you do need to prove as such. Does anybody else have any other announcements? I have one other. Nothing? Okay. Real quick, I just wanted to offer my congratulations to the winners from Saturday's elections and a sincere thank you to those of you who stepped up to run but who aren't elected. It is no easy feat, thank you, to put yourself out there. It's unfortunate, it seems, that part of the tradition in running for an elected position is now being torn apart on social media, often overshadowing any understanding of our work, values, or intentions, and I am truly sorry to anyone who experienced such. I'm really hoping that we can move on from it, and I have nothing but appreciation to everyone who went for it anyway. Thank you. First Board action item is reorganization of the Board. Just a reminder that for nominations, we do not require seconds. I know that we talked about that before. So I will begin with opening the floor to any nominations for Chair.
I nominate Tracy Marini for Chair.
What's my name? There is a Tracy Marini in Pembroke, we have to get this correct.
Oops. I know her very well, so.
Oh, that's even funnier then. All right, thank you. Any other nominations for Chair?
Move to closed nominations.
I can always forget to wait on you a second. All right, then, all in favor, do we just a roll call?
Well, you gotta say yes, I know that motion.
Oh. Say that one more time, then.
Closed nominations?
Yes.
You've accepted, right?
Yes.
Closed nominations, all in favor?
All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please, I feel like I need to make notes on that one. Well, thank you. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Dan Trabucco for Vice Chair.
I decline.
I would like to nominate John Brown for Vice Chair.
Second.
No seconds. I'll write it down for next time.
I appreciate it, Dan. I appreciate it.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? All right. Then I will close the nominations. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do we have any nominations for Clerk? Is anybody asking to be Clerk, I guess we should say? Nobody? I'm just asking if anybody was interested in being Clerk before we did such.
Rich, step up to the plate, buddy.
You have to read the own motions, it's not bad.
I've done it before.
All right, then I'm nominating Rich Flynn for Clerk. Any other nominations?
Move to closed nominations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on. Our first scheduled appointment is at 7:00 with Elaine Crutup and David McPhillips with a Memorial Day activities update. Would you mind coming on up? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Elaine Crutup, I'm the new Chair of the Pembroke Memorial Committee. Linda Osborne has stepped down, she is now Vice Chair. So, this is my first rodeo, and I'm here tonight with Dave McPhillips. We're just here to give you a quick one down at the Memorial Day Ceremony. As you know, there's going to be no parade this year, but we are going to have a small procession from the cemetery over to Veterans Park. That'll be started with a song by the high school band, and then they are going to go into a drum roll, and then we're going to march over. Shaun, you're going to have double duty because your selectmen are all invited to join us, please, and you were going to help Dave round up the troops. And Shaun, you will be here as well. We're going to start off with a moment of silence, I'm going to read names of people that we've lost from the town over the year. Dana Bean will give the invocation. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance, not sure who is doing that yet. That will be followed by the National Anthem by the High School Band, directed by Austin Glass. Selectmen's address will be John Brown. Ian Gillan from Troop 105 is going to read the proclamation, which Dave is going to read for you, after I finish this. The high school band is going to do a musical selection of all the service songs, and hopefully everybody will listen in and raise their hands as they let us know what service they were in. Kathleen Keegan is going to give the address this year. Then we're going to have the decoration of monuments. Paul Duval from the American Legion is going to read the names, and the American Legion veterans will be placing the wreaths on the monuments. Sorry. There is going to be a little discussion about the hometown heroes banners that have been put up in town, and they're beautiful, and thank you guys so much. Wendy LaPierre is going to talk about those. That will be followed by taps and an echo. Two high school students, Marley Knox and Grayson Glass, both playing trumpet. Then there will be a musical selection, again, from the high school band. Your grand old flag and America the Beautiful. I will give a few remarks at the end of the program. Dana Bean is going to follow it with a benediction at the end, and then God Bless America will close up the program. And I'm hoping that the sun shines, and it's a great day.
It will.
Thank you.
And what time would you like us there?
We're going to start right at 10:00, so a little before that would be great, over at the cemetery.
Before you get off there, either way, you're saying this is your first rodeo, it's not. You did a great job last year, and I want to make sure the public understands that.
Thank you.
And Veterans Day, so I do, really do appreciate what you do and stepping up as being the Chair of the Memorial Committee.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, it's an honor.
Thank you, Elaine.
A proclamation. Whereas, while the nation was still recovering from the Civil War, people in cities and towns across the country gathered to honor the soldiers who had given their lives celebrating the first Decoration Day. And whereas, after World War I, the nation came together again to honor those who had fallen in the service of their country. Renamed Memorial Day the last Monday in May is when people remember and honor the memory of all the men and women who fought and died in all American wars and conflicts. And whereas, throughout our country's history, thousands of Massachusetts residents have fought in wars and conflicts to defend our safety and way of life. And whereas, their legacy of patriotism and dedication to a country is an inspiration to all Americans. Whereas, it is appropriate that all Massachusetts residents remember the bravery of those who gave their lives, so their sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. Now, therefore, I, Maura Healey, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim, memory, May 26th, 2025, to be Memorial Day, and urge all residents of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Given this, the Executive Chamber of Boston, 26th of May in the year 2025, in the Independence of the United States of America, the 248th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Next up, we have Owen Gray, Wildlands Trust, with request for permission to refresh the Misty Meadow Road Trails. Hi, Owen.
Hi, Tracy. Hi, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So, I'm Owen Gray, I'm Stewardship Operations Manager at Wildlands Trust, we're a regional land trust based in Plymouth. We have worked in Pembroke for many years now. You might know Willowbrook Farm Preserve on Barker Street, it's one of our showcase preserves. And I approached Tracy about the Misty Meadows Conservation Area, which is a town of Pembroke-owned property. It's 145 acres off Ingham Way and directly links to our trail system at Willowbrook. We're in the middle of some serious improvements to our trail system at Willowbrook and would like to offer that same treatment to the Misty Meadow Trail System. We have over 100 trained trail work volunteers, full-time stewardship staff, so we're, you know, trail work is what we do, we can really formalize a trail system in there. I provided Tracy with a document that kind of outlines that, I've got copies of it if any of you would like to see it, but that's the gist of it.
And what was the group, what was the name of the group that was coming out over the summer?
Yeah, so each summer we have 25 to 30 volunteers from the Sierra Club join us for a week of work. They're a national outing club. Last summer, they worked at Willowbrook Farm doing over 400 feet of boardwalk restoration, and I'd like to keep them in that same area and have them work at Misty Meadow this summer. Yeah, that's.
And there's no cost?
No cost, yeah.
And it's, I did check, and it's not conservation, it's just town that they need approval for. I checked with Andy.
Is it conservation out?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Can I get a copy?
Yes, I, for some reason, thought you would CC it on that. Sorry.
No worries. Need it for the background.
Yep, send that over. And so what you need today from us is just basically permission to do the work?
Yes, yep.
Does anybody have any questions for Owen, please?
Yep, so in a second I'll ask Town Manager what his thoughts are for the insurances, important information that we need, the paperwork and stuff, but I would like to see the plan. I mean, I appreciate the volunteer work, and the town will take free labor whenever we can get it, but I would like to see the plan.
Sure.
Yep, that was my fault, I should have come back with.
I've got it here if you'd like it now.
I don't know that I have enough information to say yes tonight, but Tracy should, someone should forward all that information to us so I could have it digitally as well.
Yep, I shall.
Thank you.
Under the recommendations, Dan, do you want to table it for the next meeting?
Well, I'd like to have a, I'd like to continue the discussion, the gentleman's before us.
Sure.
And of course, I'd like to hear from Bill for any important information on the town side, and any legal work, any insurance information that you need to discuss with us.
So we would typically, if someone's working early, and we would typically ask for a basic insurance certificate, with the town as additional, named as the addition insured, you can drop that off at our office, Town Manager's office upstairs, and that, from a legal standpoint, once we have that, then we are protected, as long as the insurance, you know, meets the standard. Any vehicles being driven on? No, it's all on foot, okay, so yeah, we should be good with that.
So if we can just keep the floor for a second, Tracy. And part of that, Bill, also is, can you certify to this Board that it is toned out, town-owned land controlled by the Board of Selectmen and not by some other entity in town, like the conservation?
I will have to.
Because that's another reason I'd rather not vote tonight, because I just don't know that answer.
I'm just seeing the math for the first time.
Yeah, I only confirmed just what I wanted to say.
I mean, I would have to confirm that with a deed, I don't have the deed.
Well, do we have the right to allow this, I guess? Well, that's your job.
Ultimately, Town Manager, if it's not conservation of schools, I have a right to sign it, but.
And Tracy is the Chair of the Open Space Committee on behalf of conservation, so you've got a double sandwich going.
But I'd like to provide, I'd like this Board to provide a recommendation to you.
Absolutely, without question. I agree 100%.
I like the plan, I'd want you to move forward, but I do need to take a breath.
Absolutely.
And this is August we're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, so we have plenty of time.
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I understand.
That's just me, sorry.
No, I don't, no, I understand.
I don't want to take over the whole conversation.
Does anybody have any other questions, comments, anything? So do you want to, you want to confirm that it's town of Pembroke land or not?
Yeah, I'll do that.
I mean, like I said, I did, but obviously. That would be great. And for June.
And I don't think any of my, I don't know how the other Board members feel, but I don't think any of my questions would make Owen have to come before us again. He's done a good job presenting it tonight, we just need to dot our i's and cross our t's as well.
Yep, absolutely.
I would agree.
All right. Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, it's going to be, yep, we have 7:20, Bill Bolter requests for a Board vote to oppose House Doc at number 3585, an act to eliminate the North River Commission and put it in the hands of local town conservation. Hi, Bill, how are you?
Greetings, everybody.
Bill?
Geez, I didn't think I'd be nervous tonight coming back in here. It's been a couple of years since.
How do you think they felt when you were eight, air staring at them?
Well, basically, House Bill 3585 was put into a position from Patrick Kearney, who's a representative of Marshfield and Situate. It goes into a long story, and I don't think it's probably appropriate that I say some things here tonight because he is not here, and he's not addressed with my thoughts or the thoughts of the Board. But I've been a member of the North River Commission for umpteen years. I can't tell you how long it's been, it's been a long time. I'm currently the Chair of the North River Commission. The North River is the only river in the state that's protected by the state. Legislature made this umpteen years ago and put it in the hands of six towns. So in order, in order to pass anything that's in there, then you need a vote of all six towns. This bill is to get rid of the North River Commission. And like I said, there's a lot of background stuff to this that I really can't go into tonight, but I'll guarantee you that I will testify when this comes up for a hearing in the State House. But what I'd like to have is the support of the town and the Board of Selectmen indicating that they don't think this is a good idea, and I can say a couple of things that, like I said, the reason that I originally got on the North River Commission was it's a very protected area, the North River, we want to keep it the way it is. We don't want it to expand and become like any of the other rivers that are in the state. Very scenic, it's very historic. I actually do historic tours on the North River, also through the North South River watershed. And also, it has something to do with the Heron that come into Pembroke. They come right up the North River, right into Pembroke. So I donate a lot of my time, and all the other people in the six towns donate their time to make sure that everything is done correctly and properly. I just believe that what I would like to have is the town support me and support the North River Commission to stay as it is. Just recently, within the last couple of years, we went to DCR, and DCR offered us attorneys to represent some cases that we had, and we've got some really good attorneys. We have a couple of cases that are pending currently, and I believe the next one would probably be June 3rd. So this particular bill is just, it's a slap in the face to the North River Commission people. In order for me to change anything myself, I would have to get three other people in the different towns that would go along with me and represent something that I wanted to change.
Sounds like it complicates it to put in conservation control, under local conservation control, it sounds like it just complicates it.
Well, one thing, it's going to cost the town money, because if somebody appeals the decision, the town's going to have to come up with the attorneys.
Right.
That's one of the big things, is money. The other thing is that we're looking for the best interests of the North River and to keep it a scenic area. All of the conservation people from Situate, Marshfield, Pembroke, Hanson, Hanover, all of the six towns is, they're all different.
It's not their main priority?
No, and it's not going to be their main priority. That's what our main priority is every time that we meet. We meet once a month, and we go over anything that people want to do, they want to put an addition on their house, there's rules and regulations to say how high it can be, how wide it can be, what's the view from the river. If they want to put in anything that's within 300 feet of the river, they have to come before the North River Commission and have it approved. So it's just, it's, I've just donated a lot of time and effort into being there and doing the right thing to keep it the way it is. So it's just very important to me that we keep it the same way that it is. So I've also talked to some of the other towns and some of the other representatives are going to do the same thing that I'm doing, is come before the town and ask for a letter saying that we want to keep the North River Commission the same as it is right now, so.
In essence, you're looking for a letter of support.
Excuse me?
You're looking for a letter of support.
Yes, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, so what is the purpose of the legislation, right? You're opposing the legislation, or?
Yes, we're opposing it.
You're opposing it? So what is their initiative? Why are they coming to the table with new legislation?
Well, I.
What's the opposing view here?
Yeah, without saying anybody's name, the only thing I can tell you is that one particular person is grieving his decision by the North River Commission, and it's currently under a hearing, which is going to happen on June 3rd.
This town?
No.
Another town?
Situate.
A little more background would be useful for me.
Situate has a problem, and we denied a permit. We actually approved a permit to knock down and rebuild a house and all that other stuff, but they committed a violation. It's a state law and North River Commission law that denies this person to do what he did. We voted on it and denied him the permit to do what he did. Actually told him to, not to build it, he wouldn't build it anyway. So this is something that's coming up for hearing, and that's how this whole thing all came about, so. It's just, it's really important, I think, to all of us that we do this. Like I said, it's the only river in the state that the legislature got together with six towns and they all agreed to do this. This is all the property owners that are, you know, that agreed to this North River Commission rule.
So what you're saying is we want more local control?
No, no. We want to keep it, it's a North River Commission.
Which would be more local control, if Situate is, if somebody in Situate is looking to do something that you're opposing.
But you would be putting in multiple conservation commission.
So, let me, I'll just try to make it simple.
Please.
If a Board or a Commission denies a permit to an individual, individual is distressed by that decision and eliminates the Board or Commission, then that individual can go to the individual Conservation Commission and attempt to get it approved.
Okay.
So right now, with the North River Commission, they essentially have to get Marshfield, Situate, Hanover, Norwell, Pembroke, representatives thereof, to vote for them. And if this legislature goes through, they just have to get the people in their town, the Conservation Commission of their single town, to vote in their way. So, Bill.
It just eliminates the whole purpose of the North River Commission, so.
Yeah, and I was going to go on to say that this, the North River Commission was started by the legislature in 1978. If you think about that timeline, the Environmental Protection Act came, what, 1972, so there was this, Earth Day started, like, '72, '74, so there was this whole embracing of the environment in the 70s, and that's kind of where this was born, and I think they did it for good reason, and it served, it served all those towns and the river itself well for all those years. And, you know, I could see if you're a property owner in the river, you could have battles with a Commission like that, if you're trying to do something, and they feel like their property rights are being stymied, and what do you say to that?
Well, this particular case not only violated the North River Commission, but violated the state law also, and they received, they received a letter from Situate indicating that they violated the Wetlands Protection Act by building what they built. So it's not only, it's not only the North River Commission, it's also the state law that you can't do these things. And, you know, just because a person's got a lot of money or whatever, doesn't mean that they can do it and nobody else can. So it's, it just, you know, we just want to keep it the way it is, and we try to work with everybody, so we're not heavy-handed on anybody, but we explain a lot of the things to them on why, you know, this is in the particular rules and regulations that we have, and 99% of the people agree with it and go along with it, and we change, like, some people might want to build something closer to the river than what's allowed. And we say, well, why can't you put it over on this piece a lot, over here, rather than where you want to put it? So we could change things like that for them and help them along those ways, so. So we try to help everybody that comes in, we really do, because we understand that they've spent a lot of money on their property, and we just want it to stay the way it is, so.
Bill, I had a question on property rights. So when someone, someone purchased, I mean, if someone's owned a land, owned a piece of land on the river since, you know, 1977, you know, this came in, they owned the land ahead of time, but if someone's buying new property now, when they buy the property, it's clear that their property is on the river, they have riverfront, and they're within the 300, their house might not be within 300, but if they want to build an addition, they know that they will have to come to you. It's not a secret, and it's not a shock to them, right?
No, no, they came to us, and we agreed to continuance after continuance so that they could try to get the proper engineers and things like that to bring something back to the Board to say why it was a good idea that the person did what they did, and that's just, it just never happened. They never brought anybody in, because it just wasn't, you know, it wasn't true what the guy was trying to say, so.
And this is, so this is a one-off or multiples? Just a one, so they want to change a state law for a one-off property?
Right.
All right. I think I understand.
Just not right.
Would you mind if I, can I speak in support of you? Or whatever it's worth? I'm not going to speak in opposition. I've actually had the benefit through the Town Manager's office of being able to go before the North River Commission on behalf of the town of Pembroke on some changes and improvements that we wanted to do to Lottom's Ford, and I'm not going to lie, I may have been more nervous about that than just about anything else I've ever had to do. I walk into this little school, I'm like, this is very quaint, this is very charming. All of the town representatives are sitting there, just like you guys, I don't know any of them but Bill. You're not really looking at me, you want me to do it right. And I had to pitch to six different towns why what we wanted to do, encroaching on the North River, was good for us, it was okay for all of them, it didn't impact the integrity of the scenic waterway, it's nice to see how they work together like adults. I was really surprised by this, and I just wanted you to know, I had a very positive experience, and Pembroke was delighted to have everything approved.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, thoughts? I mean, I know enough about this that I would be personally comfortable voting to write a letter in support.
Opposition.
Opposition, but I'm well in support of what Bill's asking.
What is the Town Manager's recommendation?
So I strongly recommend that we write a letter to the
So I strongly recommend that we write a letter to the legislature as indicated and asked for by, by Bill Wolter. Most people who know me know that I am a strong proponent of local control. However, in this case, the North South River Commission has benefited the town of Pembroke and the residents of all six towns and done a remarkable job over, what, five decades now? It's, this legislation was filed for all the wrong reasons.
And also, do we need this letter before June 3rd, correct, though?
No, because it's, the House Bill 3585, if you look it up, you can't find it. So, so we don't know where it is, but it has gone into the attorney's office and it came out of the attorney's office.
It is before committee.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's a different, different number than it is now.
Tomorrow, we'll write the letter tomorrow if you vote it.
Yeah, it's not bill number.
We should probably make, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that this board direct the town manager to write a letter on behalf of the board of select, the select board to oppose House Docket number 3585.
Second.
And give him leeway to write, write it in his own verbiage to that effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Just one more thing, it's only take me a second, yes. As far as the Pembroke Fisheries go, 497,680 fish.
Wow.
As, as of yesterday.
Is that a record?
No.
Just shy of the 500 and a half million.
Now, we've had some good years in the last couple of years, so it's, it's not a record yet.
Well, that's amazing.
The last three years.
I know you're worried for a little bit.
Pembroke was the top in, out of 57 communities in the state.
Well, thank you for all your hard work, then.
Lot of hard work from all of the people on the fisheries.
I know, I see all the pictures of you guys out there cleaning. It's excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Which does not work. Alright, 7:30. We have one day special license, Mass General Law, Chapter 138, subsection 14, request Ayushi Pargi of Bryant Villakers to permit posted sampling event in Lot, in Lot, Saturday, July 19th from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Hi there, welcome.
Hi, my name's Ayushi and I'm the owner of Bryant Villakers. And every year we do a summer grand tasting at, at the store and usually it's inside. This year we wanted to do something a little bit bigger and attract more of, you know, more customers and more people. So we were thinking of doing it outside in our parking lot since our parking lot is pretty big. In the back of the built, we have a lot of space behind the building as well, so it doesn't really take up much of the parking spots either. Our reason to do it outside and to attract more people is, after COVID, I think the whole liquor industry's been a little down. Business is not as good as it was during COVID and pre-COVID. So we're just trying to do something different for the residents, different for, different things to attract more customers into the store and, you know, everyone likes free stuff and everyone likes to just get together or have fun. So with the help of, like, all of our distributors and stuff, they're gonna be having tasting companies come out. Usually we work with Mike's House of Pizza. They're in Hanson. One of our friends owns that pizza place, so he'll, like, donate pizza and, like, we'll just give away free pizza, like, whoever comes to this thing. It'll be like a mini-party. And the samples are going to be like, super, like, the one ounce or less sam, basically samples. And we're gonna be doing beer, wine, liquor, and this year we're gonna do a non-alcoholic table since that category is, like, blowing up right now. Everyone's getting into the non-alc section of the, the industry. So it's gonna be a little bit of everything and we're excited. I think some of the customers we've already talked to are really looking forward to it. We do it every year, it's just we do it smaller inside. So I think this year we're excited to do it outside. It's gonna be July 19th, so it's gonna be in the summertime, should be nice out. And, yeah, just trying to get more foot traffic, sort of an advertisement for us and something to give back to our customers as well.
I love this. Where do people park when you do something like this out in the parking lot?
When we do it inside or?
Well, if you're gonna do it outside, where would you have to park it?
So if you look at the, there's a map of the building, I think, that I had sent to Sabrina. Our parking lot, basically, it's like the parking lot and then behind the building is where we wanna put the tent, so we're gonna have a tent that's 50 by, 50 by 15 feet. And it's in, like, we have a redemption center behind the building and it's behind the redemption center, so it's not covering any parking spots, the tent and, like, where the tables are gonna be and where people are gonna be set up. It's gonna be towards the back of our building. And all of our parking is in, kind of like, right on the side of that.
Right, right. I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with the, with your store. I just realized back there was so big, I've never been back there.
Yeah, so behind it, right now, we, we just have to obviously do a little bit of cleanup, like landscaping and stuff a little bit, which we're gonna obviously get done now. But it's going to be in the backside, so it shouldn't take up. I think that we were just scoping it out and might take four parking spots all in the back near the dumpsters, but that's where usually, like, we, I park or, like, my husband parks or whatnot. So it's not gonna affect any of our normal parking spots. So there should be plenty of parking. And a lot of, like, this type of things, I've seen people just, it's like, come in and come out type of thing. They'll come in for, like, it's a four to seven event, so, like, somebody, a car comes in, they'll probably spend, like, 20, 30 minutes, probably not longer than that, and then, like, leave. So it's not like, usually they're not parked there for, like, the whole three hours. So, yeah, it's something that we're looking forward to, do something different this year.
Sounds fun. Is all the paperwork in order? Does anybody have any other questions?
Any, oh, go ahead. I just have one, I'm not even sure it's really important, but in here it says two ounces, boys, you said one ounce.
What is the, I think, I thought it was one ounce. Maybe it is two ounce. I, it could be two ounce. I thought it was, I thought it was one ounce. Okay, yeah, so two ounces, yeah.
I'm not sure that makes a difference.
It's a good note.
Yeah, now I know, two ounces. I thought it was one ounce.
Any comment from the chief on this?
I haven't spoken to him, but I don't-
No, but you, you guys have permitted Soninski to do something very similar over and over and over and that one we actually worried about because it was so much bigger and they were gonna have bans and all kinds of other stuff and they had no issues with it whatsoever. It's in a contained parking lot in a safe space where you can't drive through, so they don't. I will make sure that you can vote this subject too and we can run it by them. As a matter of fact, the deputy may be here right now.
Look at that.
Sorry. Does it sound likely this could be worked with if they voted subject to the approval of the police department?
I do believe so, yes. As you said, we have done it in the past and I think this would be a great event.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Wendy.
And we do obviously ID. Every single table has, like, the person who's pouring the samples, they check every ID. So even when we do it inside, whether it's inside or outside, I mean, the IDing is gonna happen regardless, so. And everything's 20, obviously 21, so.
Anything else? If not, I would accept a motion.
I move to grant the one-day liquor license request of Bryantville Liquors for the sale of all alcohol beverages samples on July 19th, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 15 School Street, subject to the Pembroke Police Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, goodbye.
Thank you. I hope you guys can come by too, check it out.
Hope to be there.
Thank you.
7:40, but I see that you're here. Kathleen Keegan, Pembroke Tree Lighting Ceremony, uh, Ceremony Committee Event Updates. Come on up.
Alright, somebody, come on up. Get up here. Alright. Hello, Pembroke.
Hi, babe.
So, come in. So I know we're just about to get into Schwartz weather, so what better time to talk about Pembroke Tree Lighting, right? Thanks, Bill. So here are my, here are your elves for the tree lighting. So Brian Dennis, Debbie Farrell, and our che, our chief of police, uh, Wendy LaPierre. So first, a big thank you to Tracy, to Bill and Lance Kennedy who took over the tree lighting, the actual lighting of the trees this year for us, which was a huge lift. We've done it in the past and it's always been a very frustrating part of the event, so. So there's four things going on for us. One is fundraising for both the tree lighting and Pembroke celebrates. It's nearly year-round and it just, it's, it's too much for us. The committee members are getting burnt out from having back-to-back events. Again, Pembroke Tree Lighting and Pembroke Celebrates. A majority of the two committees are on both committees. In certain areas, a lack of support from the town, but shout out to the police and the fire. Lance Kennedy has been amazing since he's come on board. But I think what finally pushed us over the edge was, like, the interference of the road race. It just boxed us in, so once we heard that the road race was returning and Bill had mentioned the town might be willing to take over the tree lighting, so that sort of planted the seed. So after some discussion, we agreed to pass the torch over to the town to take the reins, if they wish. So the Pembroke Tree Lighting has been around for almost 40 years. The Pembroke Chamber of Commerce used to do it. I don't know if people, you know. People, oh, they're gone. So anyway, Chamber used to do it and it used to just be at One Tree, Hot Chocolate, and the Pembroke High School Choir. And I'm so proud of this committee in that we've really grown the event to be this amazing. We have lots of activities and it's just a huge community event. So it just, it's a fun, free, memorable event for folks to bring their family to. So after 22 years, rewarding years of lighting the trees, my hope is that the town will support the tradition moving forward, whether this means continuing the event the way that it is or redesigning it, new route altogether. And I'm happy to help with the transition, but just letting you know that we're gonna step aside and, but Pembroke Tree, Pembroke Celebrates is still a go. And we need money. That's the camera. Any questions?
I have a quick comment. I know you said you need funding for the fireworks, which was something that I, I heard online a lot about why your husband was running. And frankly, here we are, the first night, and you bring it up. I, I think that's astonishing.
Richie Flynn?
Yes.
I had booked this even before the, the election.
This was in addition to tonight's event?
No, it was not. I was on the, Sabrina, I booked this back in April.
It was amended. The first night, you bring it up the first night?
Stop. Sabrina's telling you when I asked for it. It has nothing to do with him.
It's, it's just a bit concerning.
On April 21st, Ms. Keegan wanted to get on the next agenda and that was the preview of town meeting with the moderator advisory committee and you still were jammed up. The night after, you opened the warrant, did all the last recommendations, closed it, signed it, and it went to the printer. I did not remember. It was the night before.
I mean, that's fine.
And it's my fault that it got amended.
Your case has been made, the rumors were out there. I, I think you proved them probably correct.
No. You are absolutely wrong. I'm not even looking, no, I'm not looking for money from you. I'm looking for Pembroke folks to put money in.
Can we return to the tree lighting conversation alone?
Oh, my god.
What you're doing tonight is giving up the tree lighting and are we saying that is Recreation taking over? Is that the plan?
I don't, I don't, this was a bit of a surprise, so.
I talked to Lance a few days ago.
So, so I believe Recreation Commission will do that. I need to organize that.
And Lance was part of last year as well.
Yes, yes. Lance and his staff were a big part of last year. DPW helped with the trees. We had a contractor do a couple pieces of that. The lighting, I'm not at all concerned about. The other pieces, as long as Kathleen is willing to help us a little bit, I think we can accomplish it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So we're gonna have to have a further conversation about that because-
About which portion?
The town taking it over.
We either do it or we don't. I don't know that there's a huge financial commitment other than the lights, which the town already made commitment on the lights last year, so I, I-
Well, the lights belong to the town.
The lights belong to the town, right, so.
Yeah, but I, like I said, I've loved doing it for 22 years. And I don't know if people remember, I think it was like five or six years ago, I tried writing designing and then the event wasn't gonna ever happen again, so some people were like, let's, we'll help you. So then I continued to do it, but, yeah, shame on you, Rich Flynn, for doing that.
Oh, no, listen, you started, you, this is exactly what I thought you were gonna do.
I started it?
The first night, which was really astonishing.
She tried to do it before, it's due.
Yeah.
Alright.
Anyway, again, thank you. Any other questions?
More, mine's toward, more towards Bill. As I said, like I said, we do take it over like Dan said, more with the, more with the financial piece and also since Lance will be helping out with this or, you know, with his recommendations too, would we be able to get him in front of us to see what his plans would be and what the financial piece would be?
Yeah, I mean, obviously we'll do that sometime over the summer so we can have that organized, yeah.
And we're trying to do it early enough. I mean, usually we start meeting in August and we wanted to make the decision early so that, that way, if you, if you'd wish to take it on, that there's enough time for you guys to get your people together, so. And as I've said, this was a committee decision. We're just, we're burnt out, so.
Yeah, at the very least, we will light the trees, for sure.
It's a future discussion. It's a little early to plan things like that right now.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Fourth action item, renewal of mobile food vendor permit, farmer's market, Cup of Amore LLC, LLC, Mobile Coffee Cart. Is there anyone here to speak for this?
I don't believe there are.
I don't think so either. Let me just grab this.
This, this is a renewal of an existing license. I would, everything's in order. I would recommend it.
Right, right, right.
Okay, yeah, I got you.
I do remember them. So everything, all paperwork's in order?
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about this one? I remember this one.
Move to approve the renewal of the mobile food vendor permit to be held by Megan Hughes, doing business as Cup of Amore LLC, to be exercised as a caterer on private property or when invited into a public event conditionally upon approval of the health agent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, farm stand permit, a new farm stand permit for Todd and Laney Stoddard. Daily produce sales from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 209 Old Washington Street. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Okay. All this paperwork? Then we wouldn't expect them, yes.
It's right in front of their house. They wanna try it, see if it takes off.
Okay, paperwork is in place?
Yes.
Any questions or do I have a motion?
Uh, well, before, before that, just kind of, they're neighbors of mine. They've had, I've had no problem with them down there and Old Washington is a cut-through. So I wish them well and I hope no one really speeds by us too quickly. But I would actually like to make a move, a move to approve the application of Todd Stoddard for the farm stand permit to conduct produce sales at 209 Old Washington Street from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays throughout the summer or to September 1st, 2025. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, we have a farm stand permit renewal for David Nash, fruits and vegetable sales from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 47 Matice Street.
Yeah, he's been there for years.
Yep. Any comments or do I have a motion?
Move to grant the application of David Nash for a roadside stand permit for a farm stand at 47 Matice Street. Renewable annually to be exercised daily from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. June 1st through August 31st, 8:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m. September 1st through September 30th, and 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. from October 1st to October 31st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, discussion impossible vote on the board's public comment policy. John, this is you, this is yours and Steve's.
Right. Well, after the first iteration that Tracy and I did in 2020, our former colleague asked us to basically see if we could, you know, kinda update it a little bit or at least put it into a working order where we kind of go piece by piece on what we should and should not do. This is the new policy, the draft of it, that we can vote on today unless you guys wanna look at it even more and scrutinize it to be either edited.
I just, I'm so sorry. I just have a quick question. Is, which one is the newer one that you worked on?
That'd be the first one.
It's the draft.
Oh, oh, never mind. Yep, that would be it, thank you.
And the number nine that's on the second page is no longer on the first page.
Right.
It went from 11 bullets to 10.
Okay.
So we changed a few things, letting people know the open meeting law, Mass General Law, what it is. So if they look it up there, if you look it up online, it's gonna be hyperlink, so you know what Mass General Law and the open meeting law is about. And then kinda just going through the steps of what community comment is. Now, I know Dan had a problem with making sure that folks here on the board aren't stifled either. But when I brought this up to Steve, my concern was basically that's a conduct policy for ourselves, not community comment. Community comment is for you all to come on in and understand this is what we want here, but at the same time to make sure that, as you know-
but at the same time to make sure that, as you know, of, uh, number seven, because of constitutional free speech principles, the board does not have the ability to prevent all speech that may be upsetting and/or offensive. However, speakers are reminded that open meeting law and other statutes, statutes, bylaws and policies, terms of a collective bargaining agreement or other contract or privacy interest of town officers and employees may compel the board to curtail such comments so they may be addressed in the appropriate form. So we don't stifle anyone here and if we have to look at our own conduct policies to, uh, make sure that we hold up to a certain standard, we can change them too, because we do have them in our, in our laws too, in our bylaws also. So if you wanna look at this, if you've already looked at it, you wanna vote on it, it's up to the board.
Um, I would personally like a little bit more time with it if we wouldn't mind tabling this one for a vote, but I welcome others. I just like to spend some more time with it.
There are a couple of, uh, a couple of references to the chair.
Yes.
In these. But there's, uh, number one.
Yes.
Or number eleven, uh, wherever you wanna put it, is that, um, all decisions are the chair. Uh, it is the chair's meeting. It is the, in the chair's sole discretion to allow someone, someone to speak. And if we could put that in there, either a blurb in each one or have its own line item, um, that, that just needs to be clear. Uh, because that's under a Mass General Law.
Okay.
The, the chair of the board, of the select board, it's their meeting, it's their agenda and they're the ultimate arbiter.
Uh, I'm sorry, I just don't understand what you're asking, because it's already here.
It's not fully, completely. It's, it's in pieces.
Yeah, it, it, I know where Dan's going, it has to be spelled out to make sure that we understand it is the chair's meeting, because even the stuff on the agenda, it's approved by the chair to make sure that they're meeting. Am I correct, right?
And this is not from us, we know this, I mean.
Yeah.
But this is for.
For the public, yes.
The public speaking, so if someone's agree, the, the, so that helps if someone's agreed. Um, the board didn't let me speak. Well, the chair made a determination. That's, that's who determined why.
Okay.
Are we in agreement to table the, to revisit this next meeting?
Yes, yeah, that's not a problem.
All right. Next up, vote to accept resignation of Timothy Follin from Recreation Commission. I would accept a motion.
Move to accept the resignation of Timothy Follin from the Recreation Commission effective immediately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, town manager's report.
Yeah, I just have one thing this evening, I want the board to be aware and the public to be aware that our electric aggregation program expires in November. On Tuesday of next week, we are going out to bid for our new electric service. Uh, I just wanna say a few words about the electric aggregation program. I can't take credit for it, it was done before I got here, but it's worked incredibly well for our ratepayers. Um, we have saved them millions of dollars over this few years that it's been in existence. And just as a note, the current, uh, rate that our residents pay for kilowatt supply is fourteen seventy-five. The national grid rate is fifteen forty, so it's significantly more. And in 2024, our ratepayers s- saved one million fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars over standard national grid rates. The program is working, we're going out to bid. It looks like we're going to be able to save the ratepayers even more money. It looks like we are at fourteen seventy-five now, so it looks like we're gonna be in the thirteens. Um, the national grid rates aren't projected to change significantly. Um, in fact, they're gonna bounce a little bit and go up. Um, so we're looking at a three-year plan where in, in the first year, we anticipate we'll be able to save each and average household an additional hundred and eight dollars. So I'll update you on where we end at the end of our next meet, at the, at your next meeting, but everything is looking good. We try to time our bids when the market is stable or going down, so that we can get the best possible rates for our ratepayers.
And Bill, just, just so you know and so the public knows, uh, uh, this was first introduced to the town Pembroke through the Old Colony Planning Council. When I, when I sat there on, on, on that council, um, they brought the folks in to, to speak to us and the entire council, um, thought it was a great idea to disseminate through the towns. So through the county, Old Colony Planning Council, I brought it to the board and the town, town meeting, citizens of Pembroke voted this in.
Yeah, I mean, it was an absolutely awesome decision for our ratepayers.
And, um, for, uh, for also the public's, uh, knowledge, uh, the county's trying to do the same thing on a collective level and I wanna make sure that, talking to the town manager, this is not good for us if we go on the collective effort compared to what we're doing now.
So, so our electric, um, the way our electric supply works in Pembroke, if we add some of those other communities to Pembroke, it, we wouldn't likely be, this is the opinion of our consultants, wouldn't likely be as low as we are. We'll still do, we'll still be in a positive position over where national grid is. Um, but we would likely not do as well as if we stayed independent of that. So, uh, it's my recommendation, um, that we don't join the county on this. We should be joining the county on some other things and we will likely be bringing that up in the future dates, but this one's probably not a good idea for us.
Please keep it within in-house so that the, the county commissioner's brother-in-law doesn't get the consulting job.
But I, I wanna make sure the public knew that, that basically we are better off by ourselves of doing this for so many years compared to basically the county level.
And I also should have stated, which I forgot to, um, there, we have a handful, I, I talked about national grid. We have a handful of residents on the Marshfield border that are actually serviced by, by NSTAR. Same story with NSTAR, NSTAR rates are well above ours, they're slightly just, uh, uh, three digits would be a basis point, um, below where the national grid rates are, but still well above us, so. Um, for those few residents that are on an, on an NSTAR program, so. Uh, that's all I have for the season.
Do you wanna recap the water situation for everybody who didn't follow along with just the few, the eight houses on the pond?
Yeah, so I, if you watch my weekly, uh, show on, uh, I'll call it PAC TV, I always screw up what their new name is, so. The local scene, thank you. Um, I highlighted this morning, um, a big update on the Abington Rockland District Water, uh, boil water order that was issued last Friday that noted Pembroke residents should be boiling your water. The Pembroke water system was not involved, we have no issues if you receive your water from the town of Pembroke. You have no issues, your water is really safe. Um, we do have a small number, I think it's less than ten, residents on McQuan Street that get their water from the Abington Water, uh, District that did have to, and should have boiled their water. They're not connected to our system, should have boiled their water. That boil water order ended on the 18th, so it is over. Um, and I, I, the rumor mill is that they shouldn't, didn't really have to issue it at all, that it was a raw water thing and not a final water. Difference between raw water and final water, raw water is the basic water as it sucked up into the system before treatment. Final water that goes into their system, the, the EKOLI hits were in the raw water, not the water that they were throwing out to their residents. So it was, they was probably safe regardless, but, um, not Pembroke water. Um, if you ever have a question about that or you see something like that, immediately go to our website, we will have updates. Or call, yeah.
We're talking to everybody.
You know, um, you know, we will have updates and, and be able to, yeah, they made it very confusing.
And you did stay late to answer some phone calls and I appreciate that.
Phone stop pretending, yes.
Yeah.
So, and so some folks were even concerned that there might be cross-contamination because Rockland, Abington takes their water from Pembroke's ponds. Uh, it could never happen because Abington, Rockland system is taking surface water from the ponds and treating it in their way. Pembroke is served only by deep wells, so there could never be a cross-contamination, uh, between the two. So just alleviate any fears in that regard.
Thank you. Does anyone have any liaison updates tonight?
Yes, I have, uh, two. Uh, Senior Services, uh, were meeting today. Uh, things are going great with the, the numbers coming in for their programming, it's phenomenal. You know, they had the Kentucky Day Derby luncheon, Mother's Day rock hop. An author came in today for the story for Baker Chocolate Company with over fifty people showing up. I mean, uh, our director, uh, basically, uh, Diane is just doing a wonderful job there and within, you know, co-habitating with Lance Kennedy too. They're just, uh, phenomenal what's going on here. Uh, the only other update with that would be with Father's Day cookout, it's Thursday, June 12th, cars, cornhole and burgers for lunch. Please see the community center and, and Senior Services for more details. And the concert series is in May 28th, uh, will be starting at one o'clock and check out for more information for the Senior Services. Second, uh, I do wanna thank the town, especially the community center, Pembroke Liquors and Alumni Sports Cafe for allowing the American Legion to hand out poppies and talk about, uh, veteran suicide and stuff that's going on with them, uh, as a veteran and those who have served our country. Since we know we're going so close to Memorial Day, you know, a lot of these guys really feel it at this time. But, uh, for allowing us to do this and the Gibbons family especially from Alumni Sports Cafe, they were just hands-on phenomenal to all the veterans that went in there. And a lot of the time during Veterans Day, like they come in, veterans eat for free. They do a lot of stuff for veterans, which I cannot say enough about the Gibbons family and the Alumni Sports Cafe. But Pembroke Liquors let us have a table out there too. And we were out on the community center during Election Day and had a lot of great response. I wanna thank the public for so much, you know, goodwill and saying thank you. We're like, here, please take a poppy, we got too many. So, but thank you so very much to that and, like I said, the town for allowing us to do this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, will we revisit liaison roles at our next meeting, you think? We're gonna be missing quite a few.
Sure.
If we could, please. Um, do we have any old business? I just had one thing, we were gonna, we talked about discussing, um, the ARPA concerns.
Yep, we're working on a report, it'll be likely at your next meeting.
Can we have that on for June 4th? Do we have Mike Buckley here as well, please?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Do we have any community comment from the board? Do we have any community comment from our guests? All right, then I'll read upcoming issues. On June 4th, discussion and vote to raise MUF solid waste fees. Um, also on June 4th, special municipal employee category vote and annual, on June 4th and the 18th, annual board committee and commission member renewals. June 4th at seven o'clock, we have a poll hearing for Wampatack Street. And August 6th, vote to open warrant for special town meeting, August 11th, close August 15th. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming.